Okay, like to call to order the September 20th, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting. We have an agenda. We will hear them in the order that is on the agenda. We are a five-member board. One member has never been to a meeting and has opted to recuse himself from voting. So we only have four voting members tonight. If anyone wants to postpone on the board's behalf, you're welcome to. Just let us know. Otherwise, we will hear you as they stand right now. Yes? Okay. You do have the option even during discussions. If you think, okay, maybe I need five voting members, you're welcome to stay up until the point at which we vote. Now, if we do vote and it is rejected or not approved, you cannot come back with the same plan for a year. Travis Bruce. So he, okay, so he is not here. So that one we will not hear. Actually, it would be postponed his behalf because we couldn't hear his. No, no, Joe, how do we deal with postponing Travis Bruce?
That's a
Okay. Do we need to vote?
No.
Okay. Well, if we don't vote, he said no to vote. So no motion. So 2291 is postponed on the applicant's behalf. Yeah. 2292, 2293 JLM. Right up. And please identify yourself.
My name is Edward Davis, state licensed engineer who prepared the application.
We have a letter to that effect that you can represent.
First one activated.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, you want to give us a description of what you're looking for?
Sure. This is located between the North half of the streets. South of St. Paul Street, between Penn Street, the top of the street. The location where the VA fund is situated and also the former Seaton. The VA fund is situated in the former half of the street and the former school, which were class Oh, we've done is prepared the subdivision plan, which we're applying for as well. To separate into two lots, lot one being where the VA fund is situated and lot two where the former half of the school is situated. We put in line a subdivision line basically between the two buildings. It's line position, so there's about 12 and a half feet between the vertical wall and the two buildings, but there is a roof structure, so technically that could be two buildings, so technically zero setback. And creating this, this lot, lot one will be 1.21 acres and lot two will be 2.08 acres. We're asking for two variances for lot one. I'll give you something like, we'll need a back variance on your sections, 360 to 16. And we'll be holding space there at 360 to 17. We need 25 feet on the rear yard. And we're basically zero, because the way the structure are looking like the center is all happy to the walls. And the open space, we need 50% open space for each of the parcels and lot one, we will have 33% Lot two. Open space. There's the application, but explanation why I said it could be branded through the five items, the application. I don't know if I need to reiterate that here, or the submission stance.
That's fine. Yeah, we, I think we've all read through anything when that's questions. How did you come up with that layout?
Well, the, I wanted to try to achieve the least number variance I could, so I
Yeah.
For lot two, I kept it just above 50%, even with a potential parking lot to handle apartments for this school. The goal of this former school is to convert to apartments, the buyer, from what I understand, his goal is to turn into apartments for veterans. So go well, match up with the VA partners. So that's how I separated. The reason there's property to the south side lot two is to create parking down there so that the people don't have to walk here as far to access apartments on the southern side of the former school. And then there's parking on the north side of the school where the apartments will be accessible access and more side of the building. So there won't be as much more, in case people close and pass or slot parking. So that's how we came up with the layout. It's worked well for the VA clinic with sale of homes. And it worked out well for the fire as well.
Okay, so you have a buyer for
There's agreement sale for the property.
Okay.
Yep, but it has to be subdivided for the product.
Okay. So there's a real driver for getting the subdivision.
Yes.
Hey. Yeah, we're, we're hearing both. Listen, both the appeals at once because they're so interconnected. Anybody having questions? Concerns, issues?
I do not know the answer to that. Of all, the only thing I understand is to solve this and create housing for veterans. For our apartments for veterans. That's the goal. Yeah, that's his desire. I, you know, hopefully it comes to speech.
What else? You still? Yes, then, well, now to the public. Anybody in the public want to speak, ask questions? Comments? No? All right, close the public. Yes, then I will get into it one by one. Environmental assessment. Yep.
One of the comments that we got was from the city planner who mentioned the concept of subdividing into three lots for future development, lot one. I understood, but the one thing that I, I tell you when I work about this, is there is not a concern about what's going to go here in future. So I, I like two lots, I just mentioned that. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, there was also a comment from MLB, which I think will also probably come from the planning board about transformer or easements, that sort of thing between the two lots that you're going to have to figure out.
Right.
And that's not really in our purview, but it will, I'm sure, come up in the planning board.
It did come up during planning stage orders.
Okay, all right. Okay, now we have a short. We should have shortened it.
There's Mark Snow. Yes. Which is, does a proposed action for a permanent pool of funding from many of the governmental agencies, yes, was the name. And the reason is yes, is because you need to see the variances.
And planning board.
You need to go. And you actually, site plan, the laws of that, Jeff? Planning board?
For this, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Every subdivision has to go.
So you need, that's, that's a common change.
Yes, and we've been in front of the planning board once already.
Yeah, yeah. But I said, it talks about percussion between any other agencies.
I know that.
What was their feeling on it?
They were, they had a lot of questions, but they were pretty supportive at the, at the end of that.
Okay. Can I hear a motion? Or does anybody have any other comments?
I make a motion in regards to floor number 2292, that the chair, Mark Snow, was wanting to take her on questions one through 11 on the short round.
Yeah.
And, and sign.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was for 2292. All right, let's put that as a the other questions about this. Motion. This is lot one, which has the setback and open space, correct?
Again, for 22, anytime that's 2293 also.
No, we'll take them each separately. Yeah. I think the assessment form will be a formality of 2293. Let's do a motion for 2292.
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion for the board to approve appeal number 2292 for a Class B variance request to subdivide lot number one building within the rear yard setback and deficiency in open space.
All right. We need to send the courier over.
Almost.
All right, that is four yes votes for 2292. We're very, I I'm assuming the environmental assessment form is identical.
Yes.
So let's just do it as a formality for 2293 for the short form of environmental. Yeah. With same comments.
I make a motion for floor number 3293, that for the short environmental assessment forms, the chair, Mark Snow, is wanting to take her on questions one through 11.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, a motion for the actual variance.
I can do that one. I make a motion for the board to approve appeal 2293 for a Class B variance area variance request to subdivide lot two building within the rear yard setback.
Good with four yeses. And one thing that we did talk about down below was, this is a classic example of a unique property and deserving of relief from our retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Jamie Rabbit, 162 Broad Street. You're looking to put up a fence? Send a fence? And apparently you run into our 30 by 30 triangle as a corner lot.
Okay, let's just make sure we understand what's, this is not Jamie Rabbit. Right, so advancing, do we, did you guys, do we have a letter from him granting you permission to represent his property? Did we, did we take that? Because I don't have it in mind. If, if not, I'll just give him a call right now and we'll, we'll take care of that. Okay, so it's, it's not unheard of for us to straighten this out afterwards, but I'll just give him a call and make sure. That's good for us.
I'm fine with that. Assuming you're going to document it after the fact.
Yeah, this phone number is, is, you know, 4206574.
Go to sleep here. The same. Drove my wife's car and she had classical music on. It's like, man, I used to listen to my girls playing this violin. I fell asleep every time.
Yeah.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, and you are?
I'm Lee Emmerich.
All right. So you're familiar with the 30 foot triangle?
30 by, the 30, 30 prime, yes.
Did you advise your client about it?
They originally had wanted to go further and then bring in the 30, 30, we came up with an alternate layout for the fence, which on the Broad Street side, coming 30 foot back from the sidewalk, it's 33 foot to the vinyl fence that was installed years ago.
Yeah.
And so coming 30 foot back, it appears that there's only an encroachment in that triangle of about six feet on the Broad Street side, and then maybe going in eight feet to meet where the triangle. This is, there's a little pie on the
Let me just show you what's this.
Okay.
It's very similar to yours.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's what I got with numbers. It's that little pie.
Well, I was taking all those measurements from satellite imagery. I'm not, I'm not going to say for sure that those numbers were exact. It's somewhere around 10 feet in one direction or another.
In the big picture, that's a very small area. Why are they pushing for variance for that small of an area?
Well, again, they wanted to go almost to the sidewalk. This side of there, there's pretty heavy brush and trees there.
Yeah.
They all sat that.
Yeah.
But they, so they originally had wanted to go that far and then they asked me to do, to come back. And I came up with this layout to give them an alternate. And they decided to have us bring it to.
Okay. All right. That's a very large lot that they have.
So they are is, you're saying sidewalk is the property line?
Yes.
So.
Well, I'm not a surveyor. I'm not stating that.
There actually 13 feet on that side. However, much of it.
And your, your triangle worked out to what by what?
It, so it looked like the leg on the Broad Street side goes 13, like Rondo said, because if it's 17 feet to the sidewalk, then it's 13 feet down. And it looks like it, it might carry over parallel to prospect 10 feet so that, that that pie corner coming across.
Okay.
13 by 10, maybe.
13 by 10. Okay.
Can, can I ask then, if, if 30 by 30, can you go back to it? That's in drawing, yeah. I guess my question is this, that if they were that 16 feet size, like the end of the existing fence?
Probably three to four feet past it.
Well, wherever the existing fence is, they've got about three feet, give or take, right? And then they are in the triangle.
Yep.
Okay. So forget about the three feet just for a second, but if they went at a 45 from that fence towards where it says 48, they wouldn't have tunes. They'd get, they'd miss that 30 foot triangle everywhere, but they, because they joined it on that side too, right?
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So the, the question is, if they started from that fence and instead of going up and across like that, it went at a 45. And it actually wouldn't even, I'm trying to, it'd be a little less than 45 because of that angle of the streets is, is Broad Streets, it's not a right angle. It's spread out a little bit, right?
Correct.
But if they did that, they wouldn't even need a variance.
They wouldn't need you at all.
Right?
Yes, bringing what they wanted.
I mean.
I, I see what you're saying. Absolutely.
I mean, I, I just, if, if this was a tight little lot on Mont Calm or Cal Street or I'm, or some, okay. But I mean, if you're talking about losing your area at 16 feet by 16 is 190, you're talking about not losing 90 something, 98 square feet, right, of
Less than that, you're 13, basically 13 by 10, you said? Joe?
Roughly.
Yeah, but if you
13 by 10 and divide that in half, so it's 130 square feet divided in half.
Like 60 something square feet. They wouldn't need any variance.
So if I lay out the 30 by 30 in the triangle and say coming a foot, are you following it out?
You, you can be right. You don't have to come in a foot because it's on its property.
Right.
It, it's not like you have to stay away from a property line.
Okay.
It could be right on that 30 by 30. And
And it doesn't set a precedent, in other words, there's, sometimes we understand the intention that, you know, precedent has been set when we've been granting this or something. But I mean, it just seems like it's a tough, busy area. The more we can keep it open and especially while we're talking about just swinging it around 10 feet that way from that, you could actually come up six feet if you wanted to change it. Or, I'm sorry, please.
Right.
So I don't see the point, almost, I mean, I would come right to the end of the fence and look better. Going to 45, whatever the angle is, just stay out of that 30 foot triangle. And then you don't need a variance. We don't have to grant some of the people to just keep coming back to us and going, we're giving you that. You need your client to accept that.
I can bring it to them. I don't see why not. They've already come in 20 feet or, or so, you know, less than they wanted originally. So I don't see it to be a problem. Can they, if they ask, can they go up the three feet and then so over?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so let's, let's make sure, let's make sure we know what we're talking about. So it looks like from the sidewalk to the end of this fence is 33 to 34 feet.
33.
So you got it. They're running three or four feet to come off of here. And then if you started going that way, you wouldn't be in that 30, 30 triangle.
Correct.
Okay, so you, you can't, this can't be changing fence to here? And then, and then head in that direction, right? I'll work with you if you want it.
All right.
Or if you determine that it's 10 feet there on that 48 feet, Joe?
Yeah.
Did you determine that?
Yes.
Okay. What I would tell you is that if they came from the end of the fence 10 feet back where they were gonna be, that would, it's not a 45, it'd be a nice, they'd miss that completely. You're supposed to a little three foot, unless they want to gate, they'll take that. Without a little, they wouldn't have a little three foot piece. If you just jump from there to 10 feet over, whatever it is, that
This is, this is what I, this is what I would suggest. This is, this is what I, this is what I would suggest if, if, don't mind for a second. I would suggest that you postpone this application tonight. Take this back to your client. Talk to them about this. You wouldn't need a variance if we just did what we just talked about.
Exactly.
If they said, wow, I really need that extra space. Next month, there may be four, five voting members anyway, and you could come back.
Yeah.
I would suggest that even though we're asking you to approve by your customer, one way to do it would be for us to postpone on our behalf because we don't have four voting members and then you can decide you want to come back or you don't.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
So they say they're going to show that, right?
That's right. It's a civil building permit. We can approve that. It doesn't need a zoning variance.
All right. Can I get a motion, Ron?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion and postpone the amount of the boards to have post, postpone 2294 for at least 30 days until next week.
Just a 18.
On board to have.
Second. Ellie, all in favor?
So if that's what they want to do and you want to meet, meet you up there and make sure we're all good, just let me know.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Joey.
How are you?
Yeah.
Joey, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Appeal 2295, April Casper.
Okay, so we emailed April and I just texted her the number that's on this application. I haven't heard back. We, you know, we've talked about this before. If there's nothing that says that they absolutely have to be here, if we knew that they couldn't come and they gave us instructions for you to vote on the application that was in front of you, you could do that, but since we haven't heard, we've never, without that notice, we've never voted on that. So we haven't heard and I've got nothing to tell you on that.
I would say that we should postpone on their behalf. Would be my opinion. If we've ever. I guess the thing is you can't ask questions. If people have questions about what it's gonna be. But you're saying that we've never in the past gone ahead and just moved on something without this?
No, we, it, there's, there's nothing in our ordinance that says the applicant has to be here, but it's always recommended that they are in case there's questions, like, just like you said, once or twice, somebody has said, I can't make it, but I think my application is simple enough. I just want them to vote on it. So we've done that. In absence of that, maybe they got caught up in something and they couldn't be here. I wouldn't recommend voting on it if you have questions.
Yeah, I, I I don't want to quite set precedent so early in my term.
I'd like to make the motion to postpone 2295 on the board's behalf.
Okay, we have a second and this is on the board's behalf. All in favor? Nay. We knew that's the. She is postponed, yes, on the board's behalf. And lastly is James Reedy, 36 Hillcrest.
James, are you guys on the home owner at 36 Hillcrest Avenue?
Okay, and you tore out a porch and started building a new one?
Yeah, I tore off a rundown porch and underneath I discovered a cement slab. In ruins as well. So I went to start on redoing the porch, make it a little bit bigger than I heard from, actually it was Justin Gordon suggested. I called Jim, so right away I just gave Jim a call.
Okay. And previously you had a handicap ramp?
Uh, no.
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 How long have you been there?
I've been there just a little bit over here.
Yeah, so the ramp must have been removed that some, it shows up.
There is not even a, a sidewalk or walkway or nothing.
So when you bought the place, what was there, Justin?
It was just a cement stoop. Just a little cement stoop with the old remedy porch that was over top. It was just in disrepair, pretty much.
Okay. So I was looking to put in.
I did a photo I got.
Yeah.
Like when I opened the store and door, I'm what was there and stuff. I mean, I couldn't even fit a chair on it, you know? What it is, guys, too, it's right at the corner of Hillcrest Lexington, left away. So it's, at this point, there's no landscape, you know, road appeal. So I was just trying to, you know, make it a little more aesthetically, look a little bit better. I stopped the porch in the middle of the front window. I just. Yeah, then Ron, it's just, you know. There's quite a best look there. Across the street is a church. I know, I don't know if you've got complaints from the neighbors that have been supportive of, you know, just me cleaning the place up and all they did is ask why I stopped, that's all.
I'm definitely familiar with the area. I grew up in the house next door.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, in 38 Hillcrest.
Okay.
We're the first owners. So.
I mean, I, from what I could see, it's, it's not egregious in any way. It's not blocking anybody's view or, you know. There's the culminates of the front. They would go to the side towards the driveway, which would be to the right looking at it. Say big landing on it and stuff. It'd been just a set of stairs that went down.
It was one of those standard concrete stoops, right?
Yeah.
Did you call it?
Yeah, well, I discovered those, when I took over off the deck, that was, that's when I discovered the cement stoops. So they must have just went over top of that.
Yeah. How large was the deck that you took off?
By eight.
So just about the same size as the stoop.
A little bit bigger than that.
A little bit bigger because they went around it.
Yeah.
All right.
And the stairs came off to the front, towards the front road instead of, I was.
A little bit of public hearing, since there's no public, I guess. Let's, some of the buildings that.
I mean, what I will say is I think I measured the old, tried to measure it on Google Earth and I think what we came up with was the old deck was.
The by eight platform. No. He did. That was, that was his.
I could tell, yeah.
The pool's gone, right? Yes. It was a concrete pool.
Yeah, he did a lot in the back.
Okay. Then, public hearing's done. And I get something on the seeker.
All right. We checked, yes, but
I think the revised. It's my.
That the chair allows one to eleven, no or small, and has to be answered in one.
Second, by Ron, all in favor?
Yeah. Hey, so now that you passed the seeker, can you reiterate to the applicant that there's only four members and he can?
Reiterate that there are only four members. You do require three positive votes to go through. Does not go through if it does get rejected.
Has to be considered substantially different to come back.
Yeah. All right. All right, take the motion.
Motion to approve 2296 Class B area variance request to construct a porch deck within the front yard setback.
And yes, that we go down there for plans or limiting the size. Reminding the size of the porch.
Oh, okay. Yes, with the stipulation of, for the plans of limiting the size of the porch.
That is, or yes votes. Do you have a voting permit now or not?
No, I can.
Okay.
Just swear that away. Just swear that away.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have meeting minutes. Everyone did, of course, reading. Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Somebody's getting. All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't, Justin?
I blacked out. That was good. I had some questions and a follow up. Just an example for whoever has time in the next month to sit down.
Yeah, no, it's, a lot of these were typical.
Yeah.
We see a lot, we see a lot of fences. We see a lot of portraits.
Yeah.
We see a lot of additions.
Yeah, that was great.